Good evening. Welcome to the Penfield Town Board Work Session for Wednesday, July 27, 7:00 PM. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to note for the record that we have all Board members present this evening, in addition to our Director of Developmental Services, Director of Planning and Engineering, and our Director of Penfield Community Television, and also our Assistant, our Deputy Town Clerk, Sue Scheit. So, thank you all for being here. I would also like to just request, as a matter of order, that one of the held items, Item C, our Heritage Month Discussion, be moved up to an action item for discussion this evening. Is that okay with everyone?
It's fine.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our approval of minutes from July 13, 2022.
So move second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Cole and a second by Councilperson Draw. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. As this is the end of the month, our monthly reports are actually, won't be due again until August, and we do not have any guests presenting this evening, so we will go right into our action items, beginning with Mr. Renner, our Director of PCTV. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. So, we went out to bid for a replacement audio board, and this was more of a formality. We had earmarked this as part of our capital improvement. We did have funding come in through a grant to be able to go forward, and after speaking with our financier, our Finance Director, we decided that it would be best to put this to bid to ensure that we did our due diligence in finding the best price possible, but also ensuring that paperwork was in place for record-keeping with the bid process for the grant. So, for that, we did go out. We had one bidder, Applied Audio Theater Supply, and the total bid cost came in at $20,023.
Okay. How do you feel about that bid? Acceptable?
I do feel that's acceptable, that we have seen some increases in electronic equipment over the last 12 months. The delivery of this is not, once approved by the Town Board, the delivery of this is looking to be anywhere between 15 and 18 months lead time.
Wow, okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Renner?
How much was the grant that you received?
Eighty-four thousand.
So, you still have plenty more money to...
Yeah, those projects have been earmarked, and this was one of them, but we are also looking at what we had on that list, due to the fact that we have seen an increase in costs for those projects, that we are going to have to make some decisions going forward.
Very good. Understood. Thank you.
Curious, for some of the equipment that's being replaced, what do you do with the retired equipment?
It's kind of a two-pronged approach to it. So, the first one is, can we repurpose it in one of the other facilities for the town, or possibility of to a school district, something else within the community to benefit? And if we don't see value in doing that, then they are liquidated through auction.
So, for these being replaced, what, are they being repurposed?
To be determined, because we're looking at 15 to 18 months, and we will not know where we sit on that roadmap until we get there. There's a likelihood it could go longer, but right now, they're projecting 15 to 18 months.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Dave, question for you. So, are these, I assume we get some kind of a warranty on some of this equipment? Or maybe I'm not, maybe I'm assuming I shouldn't, once we purchase that?
So, we try to always stick with broadcast equipment for that purpose, because if you look at consumer goods, you can look at things that are only six months, 12 months, but they really don't give you much coverage. So, when we stick with industrial-type equipment, industry standards, there is warranty behind that, that will vary depending on the type of equipment and for where it's being installed. So, with this type of equipment, it would probably come with a, without having the literature in front of me knowing, but I'm going to estimate that's going to be probably around a 12 to 24-month period.
And how about the life of this, do we see this lasting a long time?
Most of the audio equipment, when we put this stuff in, is typically about a 10-year life expectancy on our capital plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you looking for us to prepare a resolution to award the bid?
Yep. So, if you're comfortable, I would move forward with a resolution for next Wednesday.
I move the resolution be prepared to go ahead with this.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilperson Cole and a second by Councilperson Lee. If there are no further questions, we can have a roll call vote.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Renner.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
Have a good night.
You as well. Thank you.
Take care. All right. Moving on to Mr. Valentine, with a request for dedication of 48 Whitespire Lane and 30 Colton Court.
So, this is something actually brought...
Can I just stop you for just one second? I'm sorry. I'm wondering if the visuals that are on the screen can be put on this computer up here?
Are you in Google Docs?
I am.
If you log into Google Docs, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But...
No problem.
Okay.
Thanks. Sorry to bother you.
Nope, that's okay.
Nope, it's okay.
Sorry for interrupting.
Sure, no problem. So, this is kind of a snapshot. We're looking at between Abington and Cranberry Cove. So, Abington is on the lower right, Colton Court. Cranberry Cove, it was a later extension of Whitespire Lane. This was actually a project that came before the Town Board for both pieces, so it's the extension of Whitespire Lane, as well as development of Colton Court. And one of the requirements of that resolution was a pathway that connected those two neighborhoods together. So, allow the neighbors to walk, get into Cranberry Cove back and forth. Now that the developer is wrapping up the development, he's looking to dedicate that back to the town. He had shared that, or put in that request previously. We went out there, walked it. There was settlement around one manhole, needed to be fixed. Subsequent to that, he's made the necessary repairs. We've reviewed, inspected those. So, those are done. And I'm looking at this image, and looking at the aerial photos, it's slightly off, but that you can see 48 and 30 is centered over the top of that pathway area. So, he's looking for the town to take dedication of that pathway. That was always the intent of the development. It's just, as the project's now completed, he's looking to make that transfer over. So, if the Board is comfortable, we basically just need a Board vote to take dedication. We don't have to do a resolution. I would then prepare the deed papers. We've got to do the TP 584 and all the transfer papers, so then it just would authorize Supervisor Cinty to sign off on that and accept that.
Mark, was this the same procedure that we did with River Birch over to a Colton, that area of development? We had a River Birch Road, River Birch, that part of Rudy's subdivision there, in there?
Um, River Birch is...
The next door to Colton?
Barclay.
Barclay? Next to...
Well, that's all private in the front, so I think we took an easement.
I'm talking about the River Birch that connects over into, I thought comes into Colton, over in there, too. Am I incorrect? I might be.
Yeah, well, River Birch is, I believe, got my streets right, is part of Barclay Park, which is all private, so that would remain private on their end. We did take dedication of the front pond, that maybe we were thinking was Maya Drive, so we took dedication of the front pond. When that phase was done several years ago, our next item, Item C, is taking dedication of the rear pond.
Okay.
So, kind of the normal process is we're kind of wrapping up or walking out of them. We do have a special improvement district in this area, so the cost for any future betterments, you know, would be paid for by those residents. So, while we still own the land, that would be covered by those special improvement districts.
Okay. I'm fine.
Yeah, this is a long time coming. We talked about this way back when Colton...
We did, and then went out there and walked through it, and, you know, said there was a little bit of settlement, needed some repairs, so that was on the developer's checklist for, you know, this spring. He's finally gotten that work done. We went and inspected it, said we're good, so now just bringing it back for the Board to finalize that.
Can I move that we go for dedication of this pathway that connects the two, Cranberry and Colton?
Okay, and then maybe we'll also move for the Supervisor to sign?
And Supervisor to sign?
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion by Councilperson Cole and a second by Councilperson Ackenden. If there are no other questions?
I have one question. Are the residents now aware that this action is before the Board?
I didn't specifically notify them, but obviously there were the walkways there. It's a separate parcel, but didn't send any special notice to the neighbors.
At the time that it was discussed with the residents, was there any objection or concern raised by them?
Nope. The pathway's been there, so it was installed with the original development, so it's existed as long as, I mean, before the houses were built. Now, it's just coming down to the end, so it's transferring ownership from private properties, the developers backing out of the neighborhood to the town.
Nope. I understand. I just wanted the residents to at least be aware of the timing. Great.
Thank you. All right. I love it when a plan comes together. So, roll call vote.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you. And then we have Action Item C, which is also a request for dedication of 1229 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road.
So, this is now the back of the property, so just southwest of where we just were. So, this is the pond at the back of Abington Development. Again, similarly, as was planned in the original plan to come to the town, this is also within that special improvement districts. We've got the pond in the front that fronts right on 250, and this portion in the back. We did walk it with the developer, had him to do some cleanup on it, clean up the outfall structure, make sure the pond was in, you know, functional order as was designed. He's done those items. So, at this time, I believe it's, you know, ready for the town to take dedication of it.
Just a quick question. I'm wondering about how, what is the burden to our mowing contract with this?
Had spoken with the DPW Director, so I believe it's, we had it in that list, but we'll have to add that on. It should be a monthly mow or a twice yearly mow. It's not a...
It's not a frequent mow?
It's not a once-a-week mow. I think, you know, we'd probably likely do it two or three times a season, just to kind of keep it from getting overgrown. Many of the neighbors on the inside, you know, obviously keep it up nicely, but the backside, you know, will just be maintained a couple times a year.
And again, this was just part of the master plan?
Yep. This was always intended to be dedicated to the town, so this isn't, you know, a new ask. It's just a step in the process as we wrap up the subdivision.
Great.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, I know that, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know this probably adds to our 180 ponds, or what's our figure now in the town of Penfield?
Yeah, I think we're at about 186. Not all of them are owned by the town. That includes, you know, Wegmans ponds or private ponds, so it does add to that list. But as we've been doing in the past 10 years, you know, that does fall under the special improvement district, so the residents of Abington pay for the maintenance of it, and we've already established the tax line on their tax bill. So, then each year, you know, they'll pay a set amount for the pond, and if in the future, they want some betterments to it, or they want something additional added, you know, that they pay for that and not the rest of the...
That's why I was going with that, so that the majority of the taxpayers in this...
Yep, so we'll establish, you know, the baseline of mow it a couple times a year. If they come back and say, "We want to mow it more often," then, you know, they'd have to, you know, get a petition, come back to this Board and say, "We want to mow it every week," and we can assess what the cost is and say, "Okay, it's going to cost each taxpayer, each resident in here $200 a year to do that." And then, you know, if they come back with that petition, then, you know, this Board can entertain, you know, increasing that maintenance level.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to dedicate, take dedication of 1229 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, and also to enter, for Supervisor to enter into an agreement, right?
To sign the dedication papers, yep.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilperson Lee and a second by Councilperson Draw, and a roll call vote.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you. And moving on, Action Item D, Local Law, Chapter 94 Amendment Follow-Up. This is a follow-up to our public hearing last week. Ms. Ivers?
That is correct. As you'll recall, we had no one come to speak. Not surprising. This is a fairly straightforward update of the town code to make sure that it complies with the state's requirements and their model code. So, if the Town Board has no objections, I would like to prepare a resolution adopting the local law. I will verify with the Town Attorney, there are no changes to the local law, and because of that, you've had it in your possession for more than the 10 days required for consideration. So, I believe that you should be able to take it up at next week's Town Board meeting. However, I will verify that with our Town Attorney.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ivers?
Okay. Was, sorry, still thinking. If we can have as part of that legal discussion of whether or not the proposed changes may turn into conflict with any sections of the MUD that's now to exist?
Yeah, so I think the Chapter 94 is very specific to our enforcement of the New York State Uniform Building Code.
Okay.
That uniform code is comprised of multiple specified codes for building code, residential code, fire code, property maintenance, energy code. Those are state regulations that are separate and above the towns. Chapter 94 is really, relates to our enforcement of those, and so I don't think that there's anything that could be conflicting, because the mixed-use district and our moratorium applications is really, really to development in that specific zoning district, not about development, not about building standards, if that makes any sense. And so, I think because this is a zoning, this is, even though this is a local law, Chapter 94 is separate from our zoning.
Okay.
So, I think that provides, if we were making a change to Chapter 250, that could potentially pose a conflict, I'd be more concerned about that, but because this is a standalone chapter, and it's really geared toward construction and building.
So, my concern is stemming from the potential that with some of the mixed use, it could be contemplated that there is a mix of both commercial and then non-residential buildings to potentially be erected in those zones. And so, if we are going to amend, I just want, I just want to make sure that the definitions or any sections to be revised would not end up in conflict, so that we don't have to entertain amendments in very short order. So, I just want to just make sure that the Attorney is aware.
We can, we'll take a look at that to make sure. I don't think there'll be any conflict.
Okay, okay. But that's all. I don't see one. I'm just saying, before we enter the amendments. Okay, thank you.
I think your point's well taken. Thank you very much. And thanks, Carrie, for looking it up. But I would like to propose that we move forward, preparing a resolution to adopt this, pending the information from the Attorney?
Attorney's guidance.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So move?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilperson Cole and a second by Councilperson Lee to prepare a resolution to approve, adopt local law, Chapter 94 Amendment Follow-Up. Okay. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Lee?
Aye, thank you.
Cole?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Cinty?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
All ayes.
Sue, you confused us.
Yeah. Yeah. It's myself. Sorry about that.
All right. Action Item E, 1129 Empire Boulevard, Proposed Signage.
So, you'll recall that this Board approved the conditional use permit for the new incoming restaurant, the Bar Bill, at 1129 Empire Boulevard. One of the conditions of that approval is that any subsequent changes to signage, which obviously there needs to be, this is a new business coming in, come back to this Board. And so, I did share with you the proposed signage. The applicant is here to answer any questions, along with the representative from the sign contractor, the signage company that would be doing, fabricating the sign, and then also responsible for installing it. So, I'll bring up the signage that was provided, the location of the signage, and it does include, this is showing the building-mounted signage, and then there is, there are some window decals included. There is this, what I would call a perpendicular sign, and I don't know, I've got to look to see. I don't think I received the more detailed specs showing whether or not, what's the lighting of it, with the back, if it's backlit. So, I don't know if the applicant may be better suited to come up and answer questions.
Sure. Would one, would someone from the party like to come up and address the Board? Thank you.
Where would you like?
Right there would be fine, and you can just state your name and address as well.
Hello?
Hello.
I'm Clark Crook. My address is 5677 Vermont Hill, Southwest, New York.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, you know, just a brief overview of the sign project. So, what you'll see on the gable ends are basically replacements to where the original McGregor signs were placed. Where McGregor's had actual spotlights directed upon the sign, we will not actually have that type of lighting. Ours will be much more subtle. What the sign vendor would refer to as a halo effect, basically behind the lettering of Bar Bill, you'll see, you know, some white illumination, but it's not directed light, it's not illumination that comes emanating from the sign itself. The only thing that we're adding that was beyond what McGregor's had originally is what we would call, in our other restaurants, our pole sign. Here, it will be that perpendicular sign there that you see over the front porch. So, that's really our core branded sign, if you will, and that will not be illuminated as well. That will have a, the Bar Bill lettering will be in LED, and Ralph, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, light to it, but again, it's not bright, it's not a flashing illumination, draw your attention to it type sign. So, with that, any questions so far?
Yes. What is the total square footage of all the signs versus what we're allowed?
Yeah, come on.
Carrie?
That's a question for Carrie.
Yeah, I'm going, forgive me, I've got a, the packet that was submitted that we're looking at now didn't have the dimensions with them. A prior version was submitted with dimensions. I don't know if they've changed.
If I may, I am Ralph with Skylight Signs. The signs each are 72 square feet, the two building signs, so that's 144. And the projecting sign is four by six, so 1224 square feet.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last one, the projecting sign?
Twenty-four square feet for the projecting sign.
Thank you. So, my concern is just the amount that they're eligible to have, and also generally, we are, what is it, one building-mounted sign and one freestanding sign? And I count three building-mounted signs.
I'm just reviewing the code for, as we speak. My understanding is that the signage that was proposed is in locations, except for the perpendicular sign, was in locations that were on the existing building. And so, the question would become whether or not that's an in-kind replacement, and if this Board has purview to make that, make that decision or that determination. In the LaSalle's Landing, as in the Four Corners, there's some discretion that the Town Board has when it comes to these decisions. And so, if there are issues or concerns, it's up to your discretion, is my understanding?
Okay. For the record, how does the sign, how does the size of this sign compare to the previous McGregor sign?
I have to look up the, I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry for not sending the, you know, not asking you to have it ready.
No, no, apologies. I should have anticipated that this question would come up. I didn't have the, didn't look up the building permit for the previously issued signs, which would have had that information or attachments that would have had that information.
If I may, I do have some dimensions here, and the signs are probably a little bit smaller than we're proposing today. Sign that you see coming down the hill.
Which one is that, what does that be then?
Actually, I don't have a good measurement on that. I have a picture of the old McGregor sign that I'd be happy to share. I have a picture of the sign that they eliminated, which was a ground sign, which you can really only see coming from one direction, which is a big reason for the sign we're proposing. You could see it, of course, from both directions. And the sign on the other side of the building was much larger. I have that here, but I just need to locate it, if you don't mind.
Okay, so...
Let's see. I think it was a little bit smaller, though. I'm sorry, I'm a little just, I didn't think I was going to need those.
That's okay. And also, I need a further clarification of code from Ms. Ivers. Do the window, are those lights in the window? Are those neon signs?
I think, actually, I think those are, those are just decor at this point. They're not intended to be signs, you know. What they were previously were neon beer signs, you know, various brands, and the likelihood that will, you know, some, we won't have nearly as many as McGregor's did. They had a neon sign, and multiple neon signs in every single window. We will want to keep the window space available to be able to see the bay from the dining area, but it's not our intent to have Bar Bill signs like they're listed there as decals in every window. That was just an artist rendering.
Same thing with the door then, too, Clark? On that door, that same, where you have the Bar Bill on that one door, the entrance door?
That's the entrance sign, so that rectangular sign above the doorway.
I think she's talking about the decal on the door, the red and blue.
I was talking about that. Right. That was just kind of, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, those one, one, two, three, those three signs we see on the two windows and the door are really not signs? We're not...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That sign that's above the doorway is a sign.
So, just be clear, what are you asking? Just say, in your own words, what are you asking for the signs? How many signs are you asking?
So, there would be a total of four. There are two, the two gable signs, the perpendicular sign, and then the sign over the doorway.
And no freestanding signs?
No freestanding signs.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilperson.
I have the sign here. It shows it at, it was 15 foot, 10 inches by six foot tall, so that is about, I was just trying to just do the math, I'll be more clear on that here. I thought, if I may, that size and that perpendicular sign were something that we could discuss with the Board. You know, we understand that maybe it's a little larger than code allows, and we understand that that's not a pole sign. We thought maybe the Board had the decision-making, you know...
Yeah, I mean, there is...
To be able to make that decision, you know, based on, based on the reasons that we think they're needed, like, you know, the traffic pattern and such like that, so...
Sure.
So, if you just, if you could just spare with me a second here, yep.
So, if I'm, if I can just add this to, so what I see you wanting is three signs?
So, that one sign on the, the larger sign was 96 square feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, the smaller one, if we count that, I don't really have an accurate height, but I can guess. It was only six feet wide. It's probably six by six, so that one was 36. So we're, you know, we're a little over what we're asking, we're a little bit over. But we designed it to fit that building. I mean, if it's smaller, you know, you're, you're coming down that hill, you're coming from a long distance away, it could look like, it could look too small, too. And.
Understood. When are you planning on opening?
Probably early first quarter, so, you know, January, February, the latest.
Okay. I would actually like to have those square footage from the previous sign, et cetera, to compare, and I kind of want to sit on that for a bit, so it would be my preference to table. I'm not sure how the other board members feel.
I would also like to ask Carrie about South Bay. It's across the street. They have a large sign on their building, the restaurant.
I'm sorry, who's that?
South Bay. They're across the street from you, down the, and that, for the same reasoning, you know, it's hard to see. It's a little larger than, you know, normal. But I'd like to see what we gave them, because, you know, we want to be fair. We don't want to be, you know, giving you some, a, a big jump on others if, if they're doing fine by what they have.
I understand, I understand.
You know, you don't want to go too far out, but be kind of curious on that level, too, as, as well as what the supervisor's saying about McGregor's and comparing that. I'd kind of like to see what they're doing across the street.
And thank you for that, we appreciate it. I think that, you know, our thought process on the, on the gable signs, because we don't have gable signs.
I think you need to step up a little bit closer to the mic, thank you.
Sorry about that.
PCTV yells at us if we don't ask our guests to do that.
Sorry, sorry, the viewers at home. But our thought process with the, with the gable signs is that with our existing buildings, we don't use gable signs. And the only reason that we're going down their road is because of that space. And previously, the McGregor's had the signs. I believe, from a brand standpoint, and if we had our druthers, that the perpendicular sign would be the only sign that we would have. I mean, if you look at our other, other buildings, it is that sign, but it's a pole sign, so.
Is your location more quaint than being on Empire Boulevard?
Well, see, that's, 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 that's part of it, too. I mean, our, our brand is, is quaint. So our thought was that, 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 that gable needed something, and, you know, it's a big space.
Does it need 144 square feet?
Well, that I don't know, you know. It's that, is that frankly, I think that, that, you know, I'm not, I'm not very artistic by any means, so I think my druthers would be, you know, I'd eliminate it before, before I'd probably make it much smaller, I think.
You want to think about it?
Sure.
Okay. Can I ask, just as, I'm sorry, no, forgive me, no, no.
Oh, I just wanted to ask, is this the color, you're gonna leave it the McGregor color as far as a white building in the blue and red?
Yeah, as of, as of, as of right now, I think, you know, we had, we had a artist rendering do a, do a red building, which is, again, you know, more of our brand, but that would be a complete re-sign, which is fairly cost prohibitive at, at this point, so. Looks like white it is.
If I may add one thing, you can, if we want to, you can table, of course, and look at the square footage. I just roughed the square footages. We're actually asking for less. McGregor's had 172 square feet. We're asking for 156. I can break down those numbers, and I did round off some inches, so I don't think that's going to really matter much. McGregor's had 140 square foot ground sign, I believe, 30 square foot, 36 square foot building sign, and a 96 square foot building sign. We're asking for 272 foot, square foot building signs, and one 12 foot, square foot building sign. It gives us 156 new versus 172 roughly from before. I don't know if that helps, I just thought I'd.
It's just helpful to have it in the record beforehand, so, but I don't want to talk, does anyone else have any questions?
Can I just clarify, ask you one thing? You said you needed four sign, there's only three signs on this building.
Oh, there's, no, there's this little one right here.
There's one, and then the.
That little one didn't make my application.
Okay. But then the other two sign, you're referring to that sign, and then you're referring to both sides of the other sign, right?
That sign?
Of the, that sign, and then go to the blue, and, and two sides of that. That's how you got your, okay.
That is correct. The two building signs, and I counted one side of the hanging sign.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay. What's the board's preference at this point?
You know, you always want to have all the information ahead of time to be clear, and, and it's smoother, and if you're not in a big hurry, this would be really helpful as we move forward to have it all, the questions we were asking to have put together, just laying it all out, so when we do, you know.
Are you concerned about the look of the size? Is it like, does it have, what's your concern about it, if I may ask? I mean, the only option is to make it smaller, right?
Well, I think there's a couple of things on the table. One is the size, the number of the signs, and then also, I'm hearing from your colleague sitting next to you that maybe he would prefer no sign versus a smaller sign. So I said, why don't you think about it?
Okay.
So I think there's a, there's a couple of variables in there.
All right.
I think the owner, sorry, just for my own understanding, I think you said if we were to not allow based on the square footage, then you would consider no sign as opposed to reducing. But now that we under, thank you. So now that we understand that the requested square footage is actually less than the previously existing signs, you would be asking, you'd be seeking for the full application of three signs, correct?
So, and, just to review, too, that, that I am the building owner, and Ralph is, is the vendor, so, so as speaking of the, as a building owner, that, that I might be willing to forego two signs, you know, because there's a financial benefit from that as well. But, but again, I don't have an issue with you folks tabling, and we'll go back and review. So we understand that, that currently, if I understand this correctly, that the board preference would be for the square, overall square footage of signage to be lower than we've asked for. That's fair. We'll come back with what our approach is to lowering that. Fair?
So, I, so I, I would say that based on the rendering of this design, I don't think it's really apples to apples in comparing it to the McGregor's, just because of your name, your branding, and so forth. So with the clarifications from the vendors to the placement of the signs and square footage, I am not opposed.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear, I couldn't understand what you were saying. Is there a question to me?
No.
Thank you.
And I was going to just add that for the, the request for the final sign package with dimensions is also helpful, not just for this town board, but then also for the building department to make sure that the sign application, that they're going to receive subsequent, matches the town board's approved package. And we, we always check that. So I appreciate the opportunity for the applicant to provide that detailed information to the board.
Right. Because I also did hear that there was a fourth sign on there that you hadn't gotten into the application when it was submitted, so I, I just think for.
I, I think we're referring to the smaller.
Yes.
Sign over the, the side entrance.
The entrance, yeah.
Okay.
Right. So we, yeah, we apologize for that. We will, we will revise the application and resubmit.
I'd like to say one thing, I really like your perpendicular little, that sign, because it, you talk about quaintness, it gives a little, it is a historic building.
Right.
And it hasn't been leveraged as a historic building in a while, but that, that kind of shows a little.
I like it, too.
Yeah, a little more to that, that it really was a nice older building built in 1800s, and you're bringing a, a sign that is comparable to something that fits that, even though it's not in historic district.
It isn't, but the tavern and that sort of, from that era, would, could have typically had a sign similar to what was proposed in terms of its perpendicular design.
Any other comments from the board?
I agree with Linda, though. I like that front sign. It's got a nice look to it.
It does.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Anything else?
We'll see you back here. We have a, we have another work session on August 10th. Okay, we will not have a work session on August 24th at this point.
We'll be good for the 10th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I move to table the, the, what would you say, this item regarding the barbill signs.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion from councilperson Cole, and a second from councilperson Draw.
Roll call vote?
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you. Onto site plan and subdivision action, item F for 41 Woodhaven Drive.
This is me again. So as you recall, this board did approve the incentive zoning application for the development of an ancillary parking lot to serve the K2 brewing operation. The property does, the development of the parking lot does require site plan approval as well as subdivision of land, and so the applicant has submitted their application to initiate that process. And so I'd be asking for a resolution at next week's legislative meeting to set the public hearing for those two items, for both site plan and for subdivision of land.
I'd move that we, we do this, that we get the, get it on the agenda for the site plan approval.
I'll second that. I think we'd all like to hear that, see that.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the board? Okay. Roll call vote?
Cinty?
Oh, I mean, I just make, I just want to repeat a motion by councilperson Cole, and a second by councilperson Draw.
Thank you. Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you. Action item G.
Me again. I apologize. So this is, as you are aware, this is the time of year where the New York State Consolidated Funding Application Process is open. Applications are due. One of the items, it's not a requirement, but I, it's helpful, is to, to have the town board's acknowledgement that this, the consolidated funding applications are being submitted on behalf of the town by town staff, namely me. So I wanted, I prepared a, I prepared a memo, or excuse me, a letter that would be addressed to the Secretary of State for New York State from the supervisor. I did provide that in the Google Drive, but I'm happy to put it on the screen so that you all can revisit it and not have to open up Google. And essentially, it just says, we are aware and supportive of the applications being submitted, and we are aware of the local match required, and we are going to dedicate, and we, meaning the, all of you, not me, that that town board is willing to also allow for town staff resources and time to be applied to these grants, if we would be lucky enough to receive them.
So for the record, can you just mention what these grants are for?
The two grants we're seeking, one would be for the, both are through the New York State Department of State. Both would be funded through the Environmental Protection Fund monies that the state distributes. One is through the local waterfront revitalization program, and we're actually applying under the implementation section so that we could seek funding to install, construct, or hire someone to construct the bathroom pavilion facility that we've actually done at several other park locations. And so this would be providing essentially a comfort station with covered area for shade and some seating, public restrooms. I think it's a really critical amenity. I'm really hopeful it's, can be supported in the LWRP grant program because it's providing public restrooms in a place where none exist. There are three county parks in literally throw, like stone-throwing distance from this location, and none of them offer restroom facilities. So this would be a really wonderful amenity to offer Southern Bay end, Southern end of the bay users.
And this is for La Salle's Landing?
La Salle's Landing Park. Thank you. I missed the most, I buried the lead. I buried the lead on that one, apologies. The other project that we're seeking funding for is through these, they have money for planning and zoning for smart growth projects, and we're looking at seeking funds to help with sustainability code development. That's been something that's been on the town's radar for some time, and this would help us to secure funds that we could use to hire a professional consultant to help us write the code and adopt it as a new local law in the coming months and years.
Right. And I, I just want to add to that discussion, before I open it up for questions for the board, that La Salle's Landing Restrooms were one of the projects we had talked about for ARPA funds, but we thought that there was a better opportunity to get some funding for this. And as you recall, we did have a caller at the public hearing talk about zoning and smart growth and code development, so this would address one of those suggestions made. Any other questions? Any questions?
I just appreciate you, Carrie, to bring into the forefront, because, and, and making us aware that, and we, anything we can do to support as a, as a board, that we, you know, I think, I for one am in favor of, anytime we can bring monies back for a project, two great projects, you know, especially the facilities. I know as using those parks, all those parks in the La Salle's area, that there are no restrooms. I very often have to run into a.
You have to order a burger somewhere.
Somewhere.
Or you curse barbell.
There you go. Anyways, I do appreciate that, because I think that that's, your initiative to, to take it on is admirable, so thank you on behalf of.
It's definitely a group effort in preparing the, the applications, especially the one for La Salle's Landing. Mark and Mike in the engineering department, Catherine in the planning department have been providing information, mapping, and all kinds of other support, so it's certainly a full team effort.
Yep.
Very much so. Any other questions? All right, so I think you're looking for just an approval for.
Yes, no resolution, just for you to sign this letter on behalf of the town board.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. Do we need to vote that?
No.
No?
I think we can just acknowledge it.
Acknowledge it?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Great. All right, so you'll have that.
Actually, could you vote on it? Because in the letter I drafted, I mentioned you voted unanimously. I can certainly take the word unanimously out if anybody decides to oppose. I was being optimistic.
For the record, then, can you just call it a roll call vote?
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you. Very much. And as per my request at the beginning of the meeting, I'd like to bring up for action item H, a discussion about Heritage Month. I did receive comments from a group of residents asking if the town would consider acknowledging the Heritage and Diversity Months throughout the year, and when I went back and did some research, I realized that we not only had not done that in general, but there was no sort of a discussion on the town board in previous years about whether or not to do that. And I thought that that was something that we should all have a discussion about before going forward. So I just wanted to put it up for discussion. We, I had brought up, it up a couple of months ago, and we tabled it to get some more information to all of you, so I'm opening that up. What would you like to do?
Do you have a list of everything for the 12 months? Are there more than one?
I did, I did. I sent it around, actually, several weeks ago.
Well, several weeks ago, yes.
And I think at this point, because, you know, I just want to be careful about staff responsibilities and things like that, that we would start out kind of slowly with, just announcing it at our town board meetings, acknowledging it on our social media as well.
I have the calendar if anyone wants to see it.
Right.
Yeah, because I'm not sure we.
So would you have a proclamation for each of these?
I don't know if it's a proclamation or just a general announcement. I think that's what I'm looking for, direction from the board members for.
Yeah. Well, I know there's.
What is your will?
I know there's flags, there's, there's opportunities, some of these organizations that support the, the heritage of their, their group. They have different, like the, the Pride Month, you know, I mean, there's, there's flags, you can, you can hang the rainbow flag there during that month. I know there, there are towns that do that. I don't know about the Caribbean American Heritage Month, you know, I, I don't want to contact these organizations that, there, there has to be, I, I think it's a good idea, but I would also like to reach out to any of these, if we know of, of groups that are being represented during the each heritage opportunity there, that if there's something that they would like, would they like to, for instance, have a flag flown at the town hall during that month? We can do proclamations, we can, you know, acknowledge it in different form, who knows, a recreation program or something. You know, there's different ways you can acknowledge the heritage of, of groups. I think it's, it's more than just saying February is African-American Black History Month. It's, it's more that you showcase what can, what is happening during that month in, in our town, whether it be something the schools are, are working on, or something we're working on, or, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure who would lead that in our town staff. I mean, it'd be something that you have to think about, but.
Staffing is always a consideration, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm cognizant of the, you know, of the positions that all our
Yeah, I'm cognizant of the, you know, of the positions that all our staff is over, you know, are they extended to take on something like this? I mean, I think it's a wonderful idea too to acknowledge, and I agree, there might even be more than two or different, two or four maybe per month. I don't, I don't know. And that's something that if somebody right wanted to take it by the helm and kind of go and do some research on it, but I'm not sure where we, how we want to proceed with that, you know. As far as, I think, recognizing each of them, each of these every month, when you're saying something here, like you said, March has like, has National Women's History Month, Irish American Heritage Month, Greek American Heritage Equality Month. Those are three things. I'm not sure we have, you know, time to do, you know, something for each of those every week of the month or every day or something. But if we, if we have a communication where we're talking about it, like you said, if somebody from National Women's History Month wants to, you know, donate a flag or give us something, help us with that, I'm not sure how exactly we do it, more than just communications, doing something on our newsletter, something on email blast out.
Right.
And then maybe have, taking it from there.
No, I agree. I think our communications director would be the person, I would think, to acknowledge, write something up, acknowledging each of these months. It's just how far do you want to go with it? Who, you know, could he possibly maybe get some results? Maybe we could send out something ahead of time that we're doing this as a communication itself and so I might latch on to it. That's Mother Women's History Month. Maybe, maybe somebody from the Susie Anthony Group downtown would lock on to it and say, "Hey, you know, we'd like to do something."
But if you're looking, like with this specific group of what we're talking about, I would be a little bit worried that we're leaving somebody out before we, you know, say that, "Okay, this is what we're going to set up for our calendar for next year." So I don't know what we, how we, how we answer that right now.
Well, see, I think what you're saying, if we, if he sent something out upfront, you know, that we are going to have a heritage diversity month, here is who we have listed. Anybody have, you could, this is what we have, you know. If there's anything else that we have, we've missed, please let us know. We want to, we want to be sure to cover all the, all the groups.
I'm wondering, Marie, too, maybe is it possible for us to get a, somehow combined with somebody at, in a school, at the high school, a student that might want to take this on as a project, a Girl Scout or a Boy Scout that might want to take this to find out, I mean, to do some research?
Yeah, that's interesting.
To find out an Eagle Scout project? I, you know, I'm just kind of trying to think of somebody who might want to research all this for us, to put something together for us.
So before I answer that question, I just want to make sure, does any, do any of the other board members want to?
Chime in.
Chime in.
Go ahead, Bob.
No, I think I agree with Supervisor Cinty's earlier comment. It's important to get started. And if we go back and get stalled out in the research mode and drag this on, you know, we're missing some opportunities. So if there's a compromise, a way to start out with some recognitions, and then, as Linda just described, building that as we move forward would be the key. But I think it's important to get started sooner rather than later.
So I have just a few concerns. Looking at the list, I know that it's not exhaustive. There are some groups that are not represented here. And so, one, I don't think we should be highlighting certain ones at the risk potentially of missing one. And then it could be misconstrued as the town either not supporting that cause or taking a position on what could be a potentially divisive issue. There are not just, you know, ethnic heritages, but there are political positions here that are being proposed as promoted speech by the town. And I don't know if that is a role that the town should be taking on. One of the thoughts that was raised was flying a different flag at our building. And I, for example, would, would not want to fly other flags other than the American flag and the Town of Penfield's flag that, you know, arguably would unite us all. I think there are some, some topics on here that could potentially promote division. And so I, you know, I would be curious as to what the communications director would be announcing. I think rather than just putting up a Facebook post of, "Hey, this is API Month," I would rather the town either invite speakers or host events or do things that promote more inclusion and equity for its API members, rather than just throwing up a Facebook post, because I will say that that just is very meaningless if you're not going to actually promote inclusion. You know, as one example, there were other towns that held events and held panelists for Juneteenth. You know, I had wished, I hope in the future, Penfield is one of them, to do that, to kind of celebrate, you know, those residents and really our shared culture as Americans, right? Because it is an American, it is very much an American event. So those are just my cautionary tales.
I mean, I think those are all really good points that you mentioned. I'm just concerned that we do this in a, in a very thoughtful way. And I'm not sure if, you know, yes, I want to get started too, but I also want to be very careful, which is why we kind of waited and we didn't just sort of jump into anything. I'm just wondering, I'm sensitive to the fact that, that our town staff is stretched a little thin right now. Is this something that, you know, any town board members would be willing to help with and, you know, have a conversation? Okay. So what I think I'll do is I will talk to our communication director and find out what his thoughts are about developing a plan, what the best way is to do that. Frankly, now that we're in the middle of the year, I would rather have something starting in January of 2023 because it gives us time to review it. And if you feel differently and if we finish sooner, that's great. But that would be my choice. I don't know how you're feeling. I can bring this back for discussion after talking with Chris Tane.
I for one, I think we should start fresh in January. I don't, now that we're in August, really. I mean, but that's just my personal opinion. I thought we should start off, and I think that we're going to need the time to, to get, or whoever, whoever, however of us, whoever's going to put this together, we're going to need, I think, some time to get it done, to find out exactly what, who we're going to acknowledge, which months, personally. But I don't know. I would think I'd like to start at January, January, starting January 1st.
I agree with Debbie. I'd like a little more meat, like Candace says, you know, a little more acknowledgement than just, just having it listed as a certain month, you know, have some activities involved. And that takes some time. That's a little planning. I think it'd be a nicer, a more inclusive, equitable rollout if we think ahead of time and put something together prepared for January than to start out right away just acknowledging what's happening in August or, you know. We don't even have anything listed in August. We have it starting in September.
So Linda, I just want to be clear that I'm not in favor of just doing announcements that we celebrate such and such, you know?
No, no, I understand that. That's why, what I said originally too, that, you know, maybe the rec department or some groups have ideas about how you can promote the different months, but they got to know that we're going to do something. I mean, that too could be something we could submit before the end of the year, that we are, you know, looking to expand upon our heritage and diversity by acknowledging groups each month and some, looking for ideas of how you would like to do it. Maybe there's, you know, input that could be brought forth from the community.
Are you okay? My neck is getting sore. Are you okay with my, going back to Chris Tane and doing some research?
Yeah, gotta get started.
Okay.
Whoever's going to do it and, and lead the charge, we've just got to get moving on.
Okay. Thanks. All right. And moving on to, I think that completes our action items. So we'll move on to our informational items. Carrie, I know that you've been sitting here. Why don't we just take you first so that you can, and I don't know, Mr. Valentine, if you are in on this too?
So the, for 21, are we jumping to 2136?
Yes.
Five mile? Yes. So 2136, five mile. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
No, we're going back to it. I just took it out of order.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry.
So I thought they could leave early if we had another discussion.
I'm so sorry. I just lost the graphic. I do apologize. I wanted just to bring your attention. So 2136 came to me indicating that they wanted to update their existing sign. I referred them to the Historic Preservation Board to make application so that they could get approval through the board. They are navigating that process currently. And I just wanted you to be aware, there's really, this is a replacement of an existing sign for an existing business, but it is located in the Four Corners. And so whenever that happens, my process, and I wanted to sort of maybe vet this with you, is just going to be to let you know what's happening.
Yes.
And that, to assure you that they are following the proper procedure and navigating a Historic Preservation Board approval. But I don't think there's any separate approval that this town board needs because it's not a new business. It's not, you know, it's a replacement in kind of an existing sign. And I guess I wanted to have some input or feedback from the board as to whether or not that's the correct process.
Yes. Yes, it is. And that's something, you know, we, we have, over the years, you know, when the Four Corners became part of the town role, the town board, there are certain things that we would streamline, that you didn't feel needed. A public hearing if it was something that was so minor that we thought it was more, well, we're helping the businesses out so it can get, get going. And things of this nature, we always want to know, and I would prefer that we know before the Historic Preservation Board knows because that was the one thing I was saying to you, that at that last Historic Preservation Board, there were a couple of things there that I had no idea were happening. And it was almost implied that I should have known, but I didn't. So I think it's better for communication that we, since we are the ones that are responsible for the Four Corners District, be alerted to something the Historic Preservation Board will be granting because that's their purview to look at the doors or the sign or whatever. But if it's nothing that's impactful enough that we have to be involved.
Okay. And I think in this instance, the order of operations happening correctly because this isn't, has not been reviewed by the Historic Preservation Board. So this one will not be a surprise to you. You will know it's coming. So with that information, I'll be sure to make, if, if there's an instance where the Historic Preservation Board application is going to be heard and there isn't a work session prior to that, would an email to the town board be sufficient to let you know that there is an application coming? Since there is no formal action that the board needs to take, and this is really free information, in those instances, what I might just do is, a matter of practice, just send you a quick email to say there's an incoming sign application or an incoming, any application that has to go to the Historic Preservation Board but doesn't rise to coming to this board for approval?
Yes.
Just so you know it's happening.
And if any residents ask us anything, at least we're aware.
Perfect. All right. Well, that can be, that'll be the process then going forward.
Any other questions for Ms. Ivers?
Is the sign on the building new? Is that an addition? Granted, it's small. I'm just curious if that was a add-on.
So I would have to double check. I'm not familiar with this, that particular entrance or can't recall it off the top of my head. Because they're not showing it as a replacement, they're not having a comparison photo like they have in the one above, my inclination is that it's a new little sort of like door identifier so that people know what door to go into.
Right. Okay. So being new, does that require any additional action? I know it's very small.
I think given the scale of the, or the scope of the project, it wouldn't rise to the level of, if they were proposing a new building mounted signage and it was going to be lit and, you know, with, you know, backlit or something that would certainly not be in keeping with the town board's past approval, then certainly I would bring it back to this board for approval. But I think the Historic Preservation Board is going to look at that detail and determine whether or not it's appropriate or inappropriate based on their guidance.
Question though, there's a, I see a freestanding sign. Is this a building-mounted sign? Is there already a building-mounted sign there?
I think that, that's, we're not sure, I'm not sure. That's what we're double checking.
Because it's got to stay within our code compliance.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that you're allowed to have one of each.
Yes.
Yes.
You are.
Yeah. So I, if there isn't one there now, then they'd still be okay. And if it was a replacement, they would still be okay. They're not doing more than one.
Correct. But if they're adding to it, that would rise to the level of needing approval.
Okay.
And that was why I just looked, whether Google Street View is accurate or not, who knows? But it didn't appear there was something as I just took a quick look.
Okay.
For the little one.
All right.
Okay. Does that give you some direction?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I just want to circle back to informational item A with our ARPA public hearing follow-up. Ms. Churdo is off this week, and so I didn't want to go too far down with, with her out. But I did want to just mention for the record that we received about three additional pieces of communication. I want to say that they were all forwarded to the town board. One was against spending ARPA funds on pickleball. Another one was for it. And another one had some questions about it, which I, which we answered. Just want to just find it. And it was Mr. Sorrentino, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Frazier. And we did send these to the town board and they were entered into the project file. So I think the idea is to bring this back to work session when Ms. Churdo is here on August 10th. But is there any other, and the reason I put it on for information, is there any information that you would like us to prepare in advance of that work session? So for just any questions you have or anything?
I have several.
Okay.
So I was looking at the site plan, and I'm going to be asking Mr. Valentine and Ms. Ivers for direction, direction here. I'm looking specifically at the pickleball courts where it says there are three earmarked as inclusive pickleball courts. Can you please expound on what is designating that as inclusive?
Yeah, just as we had chatted previously, that's something I'll need to investigate further. So we've got BME Associates prepared the design for us. I'm not as familiar with that regulation, but prior to the August 10th meeting, I'll talk with them and then get any information to make sure we're in compliance and can designate that they are inclusive and make sure we're meeting those standards. Obviously, they're oversized, they're handicap accessible, but I want to make sure, to answer your question, you know, they meet the standard of being inclusive.
Sure. So it's just for the record, making sure that those that are designated as inclusive and if being represented in the grant application or allocation of those funds, that they would have to not only be ADA compliant, but I'm looking at certain criteria. And it was really hard to see from the site plan, but referring to the USA Pickleball Association, which provides the rules and the wheelchair regulations for adaptive play, the playing surface area for wheelchair play is extended beyond normal ability play. But wanting to look, to make sure that we have all those modified rules, any regulations towards, regulations, play regulations to the, not just the net, but make sure that persons of all abilities can adjust if possible. And again, the surface area, and then to make sure that we have buffer areas for accessibility of that. That would not just be the ramp, but wider gates, wider benches, areas to park adaptive equipment or any durable medical equipment. Looking also at the site plan for the playground, I was curious as to whether or not those would also be inclusive for children of all abilities and those with adaptive equipment.
As in the first phase that we're entertaining right now, the playground is not in this application.
They're in phase two, yeah.
So we've just designated an area for it.
Okay.
So that would be taken up in whether a phase two or three. Right now, it's basically the, getting the site cleared, getting it prepared, bringing in the utilities, establishing the parking lot, getting a bathroom in there, and then moving ahead with pickleball is what was in, what we had stated for the ARPA funds thus far. And then we have some kind of blocked off designated areas for future playground areas, and that would be in a phase two. But yeah, we could look to do that. I know we've got one at Rothfuss Park. Could look to incorporate one at this.
Yeah, the one at Rothfuss Park, I think definitely is adaptive towards, you know, wheelchair users. But I think there are other sensory components that, you know, we lack compared to other towns that have fantastic inclusive equipment. For example, Grease, I know there is a new park there that has such adaptive equipment. Canandaigua, Webster, and just making sure that Penfield is also inclusive of. and just making sure that Penfield is also inclusive of all abilities there. And then I think I just had more regulatory questions, and I had submitted those to Barb Churdo also for review. And just confirmation from council that the funding criteria for ARPA is very specific, and just wanting to make sure that those are allocated such that in the event of an audit, I, I think the phase one is, falls below the $750,000 threshold, but the overall grant amount, I think poses potential risk for a regulatory audit. And this is something that I do more regularly with that dollar amount, and so being subject to different state agencies, especially DFS, for those amounts. And so I was seeing the plan, I wasn't fully convinced, but if we have council that says, yep, we've done the research and it complies and we are, would be prepared for an audit, then I would defer to that expertise. And then I was just.
Could I just comment that we do have Bonadillo as a reference for that as well too? To make sure we comply with everything?
Yep, so I saw that Bonadillo is for the reporting element, but for the actual allocation in our, in the usage, I think it might be a different regulatory agency. So so long as council is aware and can advise us properly and we be prepared to handle that, to be able to defend our project before the appropriate agencies, that's fine.
For sure.
And then I had a few other questions. So there were a couple residents that had talked about the site plan potentially interfering with other usage, and I think they were going to submit materials, I just want to make sure that that's properly addressed. And then there was mention of other courts, the informal inventory of other parks, and then the complaints, I guess, with those courts, with some of it is in disrepair. So a question for our rec department or the planning department is, should we use a portion of the funds to repair or better maintain our existing courts? Because I'm thinking if we add 16 courts in addition to the existing Penfield-owned courts, it may add to the future ongoing maintenance costs and infrastructure costs. And then also if those fall into disrepair, I don't, you know, the residents that go there or are nearby there, our property is not being maintained.
Yeah, we can obviously talk to the parks department, I know we've done some recent reservicing.
And Harris Whalen?
The Harris Whalen Park.
Yeah.
And those are, were originally designated tennis courts, I think they've been subsequently modified for pickleball, and I know that's not love to, you know, to have that by.
I might be wrong. I thought somebody brought up this repair, a repair was down Ellison Park.
Could be. I'd say I'll go back.
Ellison Park and then the Brentwood.
That's not us, that's the county.
Yes, but the Brentwood courts, you know, and.
Greenwood?
Yes, I think it was Greenwood.
Greenwood?
I think they mentioned the Greenwood Court, there was maybe, if there was a slope or a little divot, something that might send the ball.
We can follow up with parks and see. If that's on the schedule already for repairs, I know recently we did Harris Whalen, and those were done in the past, I think it was just last year, I think we did upgrades on those.
Remember that, yeah.
And then on the site plan, there's, I didn't describe it very well, but it looks like there's a perimeter to the pickleball courts. It's marked as a proposed stone trench. Do you know if there's any, like a concrete barrier or netting to kind of?
There would be fencing around the courts themselves, and then that would be off the edge of the pavement, so basically as water runs off, it infiltrates, basically it's a filter strip, so the water runs off the court, percolates into that, so it's not cheating off into the grass, need of underdrain, but there would be a fence up against that, so it wouldn't be, somebody's running after a ball and then trips over stone, there would be a fence, one that would contain the balls inside of that area. And then obviously, just the little space under the fence, the water could run off, and then it would go into that, basically as a perimeter drain that would collect the stormwater and then take it to the pond at the side.
Does this fence inhibit wind?
No, it's a chain link fence. You can add screening to it, I know there's been concerns about wind.
Wind.
Similar tennis courts, they do make screening, so again, you can kind of see through it, but it does, you know, it can be added to the, the chain link fence to help with, you know, some wind in those areas, and something we can look at.
Okay. And sorry, back to the inclusive courts, I was just curious as to how we earmarked three in proportion to the other courts.
Yeah, that, same, we'll check that standard and see if it, most often things are regulatory as a percentage of the overall court number, and I'm probably expecting that's what it's related to, but we can confirm that.
So if the number of courts have to decrease as a result of competing usage of that designated area, for example, with the cross-country athletes or the school districts use, if we can just get a recommendation as to what the proper number of inclusive courts should be in relation to that, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Is there any other information that you would want to see prepared for the 10th?
Oh, sorry, one more. If we go with all 16, is there a financial, a projected financial report as to what the additional costs would be for infrastructure and continued maintenance?
I mean, the 16 courts, obviously you get economies of scale just on putting them all in at the same time. I know we initially talked about 10, put in, so we'd have three with the inclusive and then seven more. I know some of the information that was shared with us is they're looking at doing some of either regional tournaments, and I think 16 is the number that, to have a tournament that size and scale, which then could bring some revenue into the town, is if we have a tournament and generate from some funds. So I think that was something that, you know, we'd looked at as if we're going to make it of that size, make it available so you could have some tournaments and then actually, you know, could be a revenue generator. Sorry, I don't know if I completely answered your question.
So we'll put this on for our action item discussion on August 10th, okay? And I believe our held items, A and B, will remain there. I don't have any old business. Anything else before the board for old or new business? Okay, I am seeing none, then I'd like to just announce that our next work session is August 10th, 2022, and I would declare this meeting adjourned at 8:17. Thank you to our PCTV crew, to Greg, and to our deputy town clerk for their assistance.